Everybody, good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the City of Victoria Planning Commission's regular meeting for Thursday, February the 19th. Victoria. I'd like to -- first on the agenda is approval of the minutes for January 15th meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I so moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Steen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wayne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minutes passed. Next thing on our agenda is citizens communication. Anyone from the audience wishing to address this commission on a subject other than what's on this agenda can do so at this time. Okay, doesn't look like I have anybody. We'll go ahead and close that and go to the next thing on the agenda. Development, review, and formal action.
Evening, Commissioners. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a final plat approval of Tuscany, Section 1B, Phase 2. This is a final plat of 4.57 acres located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Ball Airport and Northside Roads. They're proposing to plat the property into 27 patio home residential lots within two blocks. Access will be provided via Ball Airport, and 15 feet of right-of-way will be dedicated from Northside Road. Water service is provided by extending an existing eight-inch line along the Logio Circle. Sanitary sewer will be provided by an existing eight-inch line extension along the Logio Circle. And drainage is in accordance with the master drainage plan of the City of Victoria. We do find that the final plat is in compliance with the minimum requirements. Here you can see the plat. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Chairman, I move we accept the plat as posted.
I have a motion on the table to accept the final plat as shown. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Wayne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Plat is approved. Final plat. Thank you.
Our second item on the agenda is the final plat approval of Gulf Coast Paper subdivision. This is a 5.861 acre plat located near the intersection of Delmar Drive and Houston Highway. The Section 2183 of the development guideline states that when an existing parcel with an existing commercial structure is being platted to meet the requirements of this chapter, and such parcel does not conform to the lot size with depth or setback requirements, such requirements may be reduced subject to the recommendation of the director and approval by Planning Commission. This lot has -- it's an existing flag lot that's already been developed, it's already served, and the depth of the lot is currently 60.14 feet rather than the minimum required 100. The director is recommending waiving of that requirement if approval of Planning Commission is granted. And I can answer any questions you may have on it.
How did we get such an oddly shaped piece of property?
I don't know. This area was developed, I think, in the early 80s, late 70s, and everything else, you know, was developed around there. And they have a shared drive. That long part of the flag lot there is a shared easement with the Whataburger on the west side and the new shopping center on the east side. Gulf Coast Paper was just developed in the back, you know, just existing development patterns of preserving the frontage for something that was...
Have they given any indication at all what they're planning on doing with that?
It's existing. I don't know if we've -- if they're just plating it to...
Adding it to cleaning up the paperwork?
To cleaning up paperwork. I don't know if they have a planned expansion or what, but... Yes, sir.
Question on the inside the red line. Is that building the existing Gulf Coast Paper?
Yes, sir.
So they're just improving their access a little bit?
Well, that's their existing access. They have actually physically improved that. They've repaved that with -- resurfaced that with concrete, but they're just repla -- they're just plating the property and cleaning up the -- it's an unplatted piece of property right now, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve this final plat by Mr. Caldwell. Second by Mr. Rasheen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Final plat approved. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the vacation of the Raquel Rodriguez plat. This is a .23 acre lot located at 2802 and 2804. This property was platted into two single-family lots in June of 2014. However, the plat that was approved and recorded includes a land that was not intended to be subdivided, and the applicant wishes to vacate the plat to correct this error. State law authorizes the vacating of the plat as long as it is vacated in the same manner in which it was approved. And I can answer any questions you may have about that one.
You say they want to vacate it because it was going to plat land...
They -- one of the lots that was platted actually wasn't owned by the applicant.
Oops.
Surveyor error.
So we're going to get it back to where it all began?
Vacating the plat will undo that error, and they'll replat the piece of property they actually own.
Okay. That helps. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the vacation be approved.
I have a motion to vacate the plat by Mr. James Wayne.
I'll second the motion.
A second by Ms. Steen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Plat is vacated.
The next agenda item is a variance to Section 21102 of the city code for Country Lane The code states that when screening fences are required and the materials restrictions are involved -- sorry, that came out wrong. The applicant is wishing to waive the requirement of an eight-foot screening fence in favor of replacing the requirement -- the materials with bamboo. It was recently platted as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Country Lane Townhome subdivision. During this, we allowed them access off of Zach Lenz Parkway. There was also a variance request where they had unimproved right-of-way from Country They are proposing -- the plat here, the document here shows that they are proposing to place the required screening fence up to Lot 12, which is actually one step further to the right from where the red line indicates there. And from that point on, behind the drainage ditch, they are proposing a clumping bamboo called bambus textilis. And I can answer any questions you may have on that, or the applicant is here and they wish to make a presentation as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Monica Purdy with Urban Engineering. As you are aware, this is our client's property, Country Lane Townhomes. We've been working through this since probably 2013. That's when the preliminary plat was approved, in December of 2013, by the Planning Commission. The variance that is in question allowed for a reciprocal access easement across Lot 1 since Lot 2 didn't have the improved right-of-way. It allowed for that access easement to out to Zach Lenz to count as their access. The final plat for Phase 1 was approved in January of 2014. The site plan was approved this past October. Oh, we're just going. And currently under construction, the total site is 9.65 acres. Phase 1 of this development provides for 84 townhouse dwelling units. There's an office building, a clubhouse at the entrance. There's a sizable maintenance building that's planned near the pool. There's a large detention pond with a buffer area and an eight-foot wooden screening fence for any of the vertical structures that are back in that area. The maintenance building sits approximately 84 feet from the wooden fence. The closest townhouse you're going to see is in the back, and that's about 76 and 1/2 feet from the property line and where that eight-foot screening fence is. This will show you the existing wooden fence. So you can see that right there. It's on a dark brown line, but you kind of can't see it that well on the screen. You've got 76 and 1/2 feet across that detention pond. If you can see in the back of it, of that diagram right there, that's where the closest townhouse structure is going to be to the adjacent residential subdivision. You've got about 250 feet, give or take, for any other townhouse structures that people are going to be living in from that eight-foot screening fence. Now, when you look at this...
I'm confused. I don't understand the layout here. I'm sorry, Monica, but I...
It's broken into two pieces.
I'm trying to get a bearing. Where's Zach Lenz?
It's broken into two pieces. This is where the development is. If you look at -- let me go back to this. The part that you're looking at is the part where this is what's called a flag lot. It's in the shape of a flag. So they've got an exceptionally long driveway. You're looking at a 650-plus-foot driveway, and that's all it is. It's driveway to the development that's in the back. You've got about 750 feet for the first building from Zach Lenz. So everything that is going to be built is going to be built on the flag part of the lot, not the long handle, which is the driveway that goes out to Zach Lenz. So when you look at it, that's what that is. That's the edge of the flag and where it touches the adjacent property. Now, when you look at the driveway itself, the driveway has got this area here, and it's got the existing fence. It's the fence that sits at 6 feet is in the residential lots. You've got a 50-foot drainage easement in the back of those lots. So that's why the houses sit so far away from the property line. It's because there's a drainage easement back there, and their fences are probably right at about 10 feet into the lot. And then you've got the drainage area that I've got pictures of that you'll see. Then you have a little bit of space on the developer's property before you're going to hit the driveway. So that right there that you're looking at is that long handle that goes out to Zach Lenz. Does that make sense? Okay.
You say that -- you mean the property owner's fence. Am I correct?
Yes. That's the property owner's fence. The variance is to allow the developer not to put up a fence in that area. Now, these are pictures of the existing conditions out there. So you've got a drainage ditch area that sits within this drainage easement. There's some weasatch that grows up in there. You've got the power poles that are existing out there. Those sit at the very back of the residential houses in Heritage Manor. That sits at the back of their property is where those power poles are erected. There's a little bitty rural fence, and on that little rural fence, that's where the developer's property starts. Up at the street, where it touches Zach Lenz, where their frontage is, that's right at 75 feet. They got the minimum amount that they could of frontage on there. Then it squeezes down to about 50 feet further back into the property, which is just long enough for them to do a driveway. This right here gives you a better idea of what we're looking at. You can see the way that trucks have the ability to get in there. There's some pipes laying down. That's for the developer to go in and build the actual driveway that's going to be hitting Zach Lenz. They had planned to already have that up and going, but due to weather conditions, the pipes have just sort of been sitting out there, and they haven't been able to build it. But it is on the schedule to be built soon, so they should start taking some access off of there. You can also see the weasatch that's sort of growing wild at the drainage easement that they have. And then you can see the fences as they sit within the property owner's rear yards. This is what the developer has a desire to do. They want to build an eight-foot screening fence up to Lot 11. Now, on Lots 12 through 20, which is indicated that stretch, it's 542 linear feet. That is shown with the red lines. On that area, they would like to not build an eight-foot screening fence. What they are asking to do instead is to do bamboo screening in that area. Why is a variance necessary? The developer feels that the variance request is going to be necessary because it's the only way to do away with the screening fence requirement to allow for this bamboo, which is called clumping. It's not running bamboo, so it's noninvasive. We have some pictures of it here in Victoria. This is the only way to do that and to put some type of conditions of approval on it. What the developer is proposing, right now, they are the only ones that have rights to use that driveway. This is a long, skinny piece. There is no danger of them putting any sort of structures on there. But there's a big piece of property next to it that they don't own that fronts on Zach Lenz. If anyone else were to want to take access to their driveway, not build a text dock, get a permit because of spacing or whatever, they, at that point in time, would want a condition put on the variance that says an eight-foot screening fence has to be put in place because you're going to increase the amount of traffic that's going to be going up and down this section of driveway. Whenever Phase 2 goes, they're going to have another area to access, so there will be some reduction in the amount of use for that drive. They feel that the 656 linear feet is -- shouldn't require the eight-foot wooden screening fence for the entire length. They only want to do bamboo for the 542 linear feet. The driveway itself, if this development was accessed by a local street, no screening fence would be required whatsoever. The requirement just wouldn't exist. As I've said, the closest structure is 750 feet away from Zach Lenz. The developer is sensitive to the adjacent residential area in the area where there are vertical structures and there are going to be people and cars and stuff that's really going to impact the neighborhood. They've set larger setbacks. They've got a buffer area, things that are in excess of the minimum that's required by current code. The hardship, they feel, is not self-imposed. Because they wanted to build so many units, after 99 units, you either have to do a sprinkler system or you have to provide for a second point of access. When you provide a sprinkler system according to the 2009 IFC, which is the International Fire Code, which is what the first variance was about, you have to sprinkle everything. You know, you put a maintenance building in there, all of that is fire sprinkled. The first section only has 84 units, but in the second phase, they do want to build a lot more. So the developer is seeking this variance. They're going to be maintaining the bamboo inside their development. It's something they're going to use. So this is for aesthetic reasons and purposes. They're going to be using it anyway, and they would like to use that and have a soft buffer instead of a wooden screening fence right there. The developer has talked to several different people. We have talked to several people. We are not bamboo experts, so we sought out bamboo experts. There are people in the Victoria Master Gardeners. There are also bamboo specialists in Houston and in Austin who have said that there are types -- there's not just one type of bamboo textilis. There are several different types, and it is something that you can use and grow in this area. Not every single kind, you know, works, but there are different types that you can use here. It's noninvasive. It's not going to run into the neighbors' backyards. And as I said, they are going to be using this in some of the expansive open spaces that they have in their development. The height of it really is not a concern. You just cut off the tops on this, and it stops growing up on the existing stalks. You have to keep trimming, and it'll grow out. But that's how you control bamboo according to all of the specialists, and that's how they're going to be maintaining it on the interior of the development. It can be planted as such that it's not going to grow into those power lines. It can be cut off, obviously, in such a way that it's not going to grow into the power lines and the existing power poles that don't sit on their property. The long run will have an automatic sprinkler system, so they're going to irrigate it. They're not saving any money doing it. This right here is example of clumping bamboo that we have here in Victoria. So this is screening of a pool back on Power Street. A former planning commissioner let us go into her backyard, and so this is some beautiful bamboo that they have back there. This species that you're looking at and what it is, this is approximately seven years old. So, of course, they don't have any concern of overhead power lines or anything like that. So you're looking at something that's like 25 feet tall. You know, it's really tall. It's very dense. They have two different plants in their backyard. They have also other screening and stuff back there. They have other mini-plants, but this is how big it can get. And we're talking about planting numerous ones in a row. Here are the plants themselves that are available and that can grow well in Texas. There are much more than these, but these are the two different types that the developer was looking at and installing. When you install them, you know, the experts know all the stuff, but you can install them pretty tall. What we would be looking at is installing stuff at a sizable height. Within two years, you're going to exceed that height easily, and you will start -- the bigger ones that you put in there, you know, the taller they're going to be and the more spread out they'll be. So that's what they're doing. They're not looking to put the smallest gallon size that they can out there. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions that you may have.
What's the cost of 134 bamboo plants versus 542 feet of fence?
It's more expensive.
Is it?
Yes, because you have to put in an irrigation system. It's more expensive. They're not cheap, the size that we're looking to put in at all.
What was the thought behind planting bamboo instead of just installing traditional fence?
It's for aesthetic purposes. They want that look at the drive, and they don't want to do a fence and the bamboo. They want that look at the drive. They would like it.
Who's going to maintain it?
The developer would have to maintain it. They're going to be maintaining the bamboo interior to it so that they're planting inside, so they would maintain that also.
I have another question. One of your bullets up there in your presentation said that if somebody were to develop, I guess, on the north side of the flag handle, they wanted an eight-foot fence there? Is that correct?
Well, what could happen is the Planning Commission could say, okay, here we go. If we're looking at this, there's where they want to put the bamboo. Now, conditions of approval can go on any variance. You are familiar with that. Now, outside of the other black line, that's not their property.
Right.
If somebody wants to access their lot for their development, for whatever reasons, and it's not going to be used just by the people that live there in the development itself, by some -- an adjacent property owner wants it, you can put a condition of approval on the variance that says the bamboo is here, but now you're going to have more traffic on this drive. An eight-foot wooden screening fence needs to be installed.
Do you know what the traffic count is going to be proposed?
No. Whatever it is, when they do their second build-out, I don't know, you know, how that second point of access is going to affect it.
Do the multiplier of the number of houses?
I don't know. I'm just asking. Okay. Just bringing up some thoughts.
I don't have traffic count software anymore.
That's fine.
So the developer is going to maintain the bamboo ongoing?
Yes. It's part of their property.
I got a question. Who -- and this may be to Jared. What kind of enforcement do we have as a city? That's -- I mean, if I've got a tree in my yard and I planted it, I can grow as high as I want to grow it. I don't think you can tell me anything, I don't think.
Right. The only thing the city controls is whether is how that can encroach the city right-of-way. You know, streets of...
Bringing up points.
Require, you know, certain vertical clearance on the streets, but there's nothing that keeps the tree from growing, you know, whatever its height would be.
Go ahead.
If the sprinkler system was used, then this -- all this dialogue goes away. Is that correct? You wouldn't have wooden fence, you wouldn't have bamboo. You'd have a sprinkler system in each unit.
Yes, but that's what the first variance was about that was granted back in 2013. But yes, you are correct.
You would still have the screening fence required, but you wouldn't have had to have had two entrances. This development, when it is fully developed out, once it gets over 99 lots, has to have two driveway entrances. If they had done sprinkler systems inside, they could have done just one drive entrance. The screening fence would have applied anywhere the commercial development is adjacent to single-family.
And where will the future development be in relationship to this?
Towards the top of the picture, towards -- that's Country Lane, and then up there that arterial you see is Salem Road, so it's going to go up towards Salem Road.
So that dirt road that they're using, that's the undeveloped access they currently have off Salem Road?
Right, right. And when they develop that second phase, part of that condition was that they would pave that part of Country Lane up to the edge of their property line. I believe that was December 2013 or January 2014, somewhere in that. It's been a little over a year since that was -- there it is, December.
So Monica, the bamboo, where in relationship to the property line is the bamboo proposed to be planted? Is it going to be planted right on the property line? Is it going to be planted outside the drainage easement?
The drainage easement doesn't sit on their property. I am not a bamboo expert. I don't know how many feet away it is going to be planted from their property line, but I would think you don't back it right up to it.
Because I asked an expert, too. And with clumping bamboo, what I was told was as soon as you cut it, it then wants to start to spread outward. You can control how high it's going to get, but you can't control the circle once it starts to spread out. So it's not just going to spread along the lane. It's going to spread towards the fence of the property owners that are adjacent to the lane as well.
It would have to run down the ditch to do that.
So the ditch is still going to be there?
Oh, yes.
So it's going to be on the drive side of the ditch?
Yes. The ditch, the drainage easement itself, which does contain that 10-foot ditch, that does not sit on the developer's property. So they're not proposing to put it and have it run into the drainage ditch.
Jared, when it moves into the drainage ditch, that's a -- is the city responsible for keeping that ditch?
Well, the property owners, the property owners actually own the land underneath that easement. And on that stretch, for whatever reason, the property owners put their fence on the other -- their side of the ditch. They actually own that additional 10 or 15 feet, whatever it is, but...
So if anything grows down into there, they're responsible for...
Yeah, obviously, see from the photos, there's some weasatch and whatnot.
Yeah, I was saying...
Ultimately, that's going to need to be cleaned out.
Right.
And, yeah, it's going to fall on the property owners and/or the city to maintain that.
Got another question. Has there been any consideration given to bug control within the bamboo itself?
I can't answer that question. The developer would need to speak.
Because mosquitoes love bamboo. So do other creepy crawlies.
Snakes, too. Snakes too.
And Jared, the requirement, should somebody develop inside the flag handle, fence would only, they're proposing they'd only put a fence up if whoever develops in that area wants access off of the drive, correct? The way I'm understanding it?
That's the way I understand their proposal. The funny thing is, if the property that they're talking about that might want access, if it were to develop against that multifamily as commercial, you know, I don't know, whatever, used car lot or something like that, they would have to put up a screening fence to screen the commercial property from the multifamily.
And along the drive as well?
And along the driveway.
So you have a closed end, yeah?
So it-
I didn't think that you, whenever a commercial developed against multifamily, that they had to put up a screening fence also.
There are two triggers. Single families protect, single-family houses are protected the most from any kind of commercial development and multifamily. Multifamily does have some protection as well. If some commercial were to develop up against the multifamily, they would also have to put up a screening fence to protect the multifamily. Doesn't work in reverse. If single-family develops up against existing multifamily, then nothing happens. But that is in the screening fence requirements.
That's what I saw. Anybody that developed in this area would have to put a screening fence here. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, unless the developer gave them a wa, you know, the apartment developer could give them a waiver. Obviously, if they were going to let them share access, then that screening fence along there would impede the ability to share the access. So, but the, so, there's a waiver process in there for them, just like there's a waiver process for the apartment and the multifamily homes.
So now, let's jump five years down the road. The approvals, bamboo's planted, everything goes up, and somebody comes along and wants to develop that piece of property, negotiates access off the drive, you're saying that your company you represent is going to put, then put an eight-foot fence behind the bamboo or in front of the bamboo on the drive side, or rip the bamboo out?
I believe it's proposed to be put behind the bamboo.
So it'd be bamboo behind it?
It would connect on to the existing eight-foot fence that they're building, which is-
Dan, do you got a guy, Ray? I don't know if we want to get to that portion.
Well, probably got some people that want to- Well, whenever, what we'll do is, when she's through at her-
I'm done.
You are done? Okay. Do we have any more questions? We can open it up for a public hearing then, if anybody wants to.
Thank you for answering my questions.
I think we can go back to Monica if we want to.
Well, we can always do that.
Sure.
So, all right, let's close that. We'll open this up to a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this commission on this subject, please do so at this time. State your name, your address, and please limit yourself to at least five minutes, or less than five minutes, whatever it takes.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Plunkett. I am at 405 New Haven Street. We back up to this development. I'll be brief. I think the general sentiment is that the residents do not wish to have the bamboo installed on the grounds that unless it can be proven that it will not invade, that it will not impede on our maintenance responsibilities back along our fence line. Mosquitoes are something I talked about with my wife, with installing drainage and irrigation and mosquitoes having a fondness for bamboo, apparently. That is something that I do not want to have in my backyard. And I am quite satisfied with an eight-foot fence.
Thank you, sir.
I want to point out to the commission that, you know, as was pointed out, there's a drainage easement there that's the property owner's responsibility to keep clear, and it's not currently being kept clear. There's mesquite, there's all kinds of stuff growing in that, in that area right now, for those that haven't driven over there yet.
What else?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Fortenberry, and we live at 603 New Haven. And we do want the fence. There will be 84 units, probably times two cars. That's 168 cars every day going back behind our house. The noise is going to be atrocious with just the bamboo. It's going to be stalky at the bottom and leafy at the top. And yes, like you said, you cut the top off, where's it go? It gets bigger. And I don't think there's any way that it can be totally non-invasive.
Five years down the road.
Five years down the road, where's the developer at? And I, I'm sorry, we've had, you know, I just can't imagine living there with 168 cars going right behind your fence every day, or thereabouts. Flood control? That ditch was cleaned when we bought, when we started out, there was a fence right up against our fence, was why we probably didn't clean it out. The mosquito's gotten, or the we-satch has gotten really high. They cut part of it down on the other side of the fence, but they didn't, they didn't come up to their barbed wire fence, because there was a barbed wire fence there when we moved there 20 years ago, right up against where our fence is. So we're probably one of the older homeowners back in there. And it's never been a real problem, other than we would love to have that we-satch out of there. But, you know, I don't want the bamboo that's 25 feet tall up against my fence and everything. Sorry, it's just not something that I want back there, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tracy Rush, I live at 407 New Haven, and I agree with all their concerns.
Staff did also receive two letters from homeowners who couldn't be present, that they also were opposed to the bamboo. And those can be found in your packet.
Okay, looks like no one else would like to address the commission. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for our deliberations.
The staff does recommend denial of the variance request, and I kind of tend to agree with that.
Staff does recommend denial, with the condition that if, or, and if planning commission does approve, we do recommend that an evergreen vegetation be required with bamboo being an acceptable alternative, if planning commission does approve the variance.
Okay. Thank you. Tough one.
I read in here somewhere that this is regularly used in the Austin and Houston areas. For what it's worth, do we know if their code, their building code allows for that? Or not sure?
We didn't do research into that.
Okay, I was just curious. Clumping bamboo, by research, is commonly used in lieu, or to put in fence line where you don't want to have a fence. It's used residentially, it's used commercially, it's used in agriculture for the same reason, when they want to put up something that has more of a natural, for whatever reason, rather than stringing up barbed wire or stringing up a wood fence. It is, as long as it's maintained, it grows out, kind of like a myrtle does, you know, it's going to grow out and get bushier as you cut it. My concern is that clumping, it's going to go in any direction. You can't control it in a linear path. So you're, as it grows, it's going to get deep as well as wide. That's my main concern with it. I'm a fan of bamboo, so I, you know, I did some checking on it to see what the different uses are in, within a city, because I'm aware of what uses out of the country. But I'm also very aware, if I were one of those property owners, how would I feel about just having some bamboo? And it will take a few years before it fills in thick enough that you're not going to be able to see the drive, and it's going to act as a deterrent to noise. So because of that, I would vote in favor of denying the variance unless the developer wants to put a fence up and then put bamboo on either side of it for aesthetics.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing back.
Because, I mean, if they're doing it for aesthetics, that's great. It's going to look awesome. But I think I'm concerned about down the road, I'm concerned about how long it's going to take before that bamboo actually becomes a fence, and the homeowners that are going to have to live with it during that period.
Certainly makes a nice home for rats and mice.
Yeah.
That type of vermin.
But to be fair, the area's not being kept clear now, you know, so there is-
And I see that too. So hopefully, people- I personally think that we're going to be putting a fence up anyway, because I think that property's going, they're going to want access to it quicker than people think, because we're growing, this town's growing.
And you bring up an interesting question, reminded me, when I was reading through the notes originally, I wanted to ask Jared a question. How far up Zach Lence would, if somebody were to develop that property, how close can another drive be along Zach Lence as far as DOT?
It's several hundred feet, and I, it'd be dangerous for me to just conjecture. I suspect that based on where those ramps are and whatnot, that if someone wants to develop that property, they probably already know they need to share that driveway. But that's a question for text.
I'm concerned about where the ramp is too.
Is the intent of a fence only for, with noise and lights? Is the security at all involved in this?
It's a little bit of everything.
Okay.
Y'all know Victoria didn't have zoning, so this is, this is one of the very few mechanisms we have in our code to provide some sort of buffer and separation from, and privacy and all of those benefits, to separate residential from commercial. This is, this is one of the few things, it's basically this and an increased building setback line, that's all that we have, because we don't have, you know, some kind of traditional zoning ordinance. So, and the ordinance doesn't allow, it's very specific, doesn't allow for live vegetation to count as a screening fence. And it also doesn't distinguish between whether or not the commercial business is 100 feet away from the fence or 10 feet away from 20 feet, so.
Well, do I hear any kind of motion?
Mr. Wayne, did you have a question? Well, I had, yeah, I had a thought, but I would, I would make a motion to deny the variance.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the table by Mr. Wayne to deny the variance. I have a second by Mr. Ashin. All those in favor of denying the variance, please show us, show, raise your hand. Those opposed? The variance has been denied. We have a unanimous.
I think it's a great thing to do.
Thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda tonight is to give a quick update on where we are with the proposed revisions to the sign ordinance. If you'll look on the dice, there's a handout. So, to give a little brief background, we, with our variance, I believe it was in December that the commission heard regarding multi-tenant signs, we promised to bring back some proposed revisions that would allow multi-tenant signs by right, instead of having to come to the commission for every time one was proposed through a variance process. And in starting our revisions to the ordinance, we realized it's kind of a bigger project than just inserting multi-tenant signs. So there's kind of two parts to this proposed ordinance rewrite. One is, there's two substantive changes, and I'm going to go over those briefly. And then the rest of the rewrites are centered around just enforcement, updating it to comply with state law processes, things that don't really change what type of signs you can put on the ground, but changes how people get permits and how we enforce the ordinance as it's written. And our city attorney, Thomas Squish, will go over those proposed changes. So briefly, just to go back to what I'm presenting tonight, before I turn it over to Thomas, is the two substantive changes, which is multi-tenant and then to deal with our digital electronic signs that was not even the type of, the technology hadn't even been invented when our sign ordinance was originally written in 1984. And so we need, are at a point where we need to address what kind of digital and electronic signs we want in Victoria. So just kind of a brief summary of what we are proposing for the multi-tenant signs is that it be an optional type of sign, it's not required. So anytime someone wants to have a co-located freestanding sign that is, has to be in the same subdivision or same shopping center, the property owners can elect to do that, and they get some, there's some trade-offs. If they are, if a property owner wants to co-locate on a sign, on a multi-tenant sign, and that's for better frontage, or, for example, what we saw for the variance in December with AT&amp;T wanting to co-locate on a sign that was not on their property, they'd have to be in the same subdivision, and they would have to give up their existing freestanding sign. So it's a trade-off. They can not be located on their property as long as they're in the same subdivision, but then they would give up. And it is completely optional. So if they do not want to co-locate, then they can have their freestanding sign and just follow the existing regulations as they stand. There's another bonus in the multi-tenant section that for, this is geared towards more master developments with, you know, master planned shopping center or just, you know, your regular strip center all on one lot, that if a property owner or developer chooses to go with a common lettering or two colors or less, then they would get a bonus in the size of signage, the amount of signage that they could have. So 10% larger, 20% larger sign, freestanding sign, if all of the tenants located on that sign are within two-color schemes and same lettering. So again, you can, they can choose to follow this current sign ordinance, or they can have the option to go after the multi-tenant regulations, which do allow some bonuses, but then there's some trade-offs for a larger sign has to be a common lettering or coloring. So that's how we've approached it. It's not mandatory, it's not going to be a requirement, but if they choose to go that route of multi-tenant signs, there's some trade-offs. The other substantive changes were, do relate to the new technologies, and we are actually breaking out to just describe two types of new technological signs. Digital signs, which are, what I like to kind of explain is TV, the TV styles, you know, you have your digital billboards and your digital on-premise signs. And I think there's an example of one, the Speedy Stop at Glasgow, and then a digital billboard, I think you've probably noticed the one at Mockingburn, it's the most popular. Mockingburn in Maine is the one that we receive comments on the most. So those are the type of digital signs that we will be regulating how quickly, or how frequently those messages can change, so that we don't have flashing or a lot of graphics to distract drivers. And then glare is another common complaint that we have. So our city attorney has done a lot of research on what type of lighting standards, so have some fun language reference, how high, how bright something is, is described as nits. So that's kind of was a new term for me in our research. And you'll see that outlined in the proposed changes. And then we are separating out electronic message boards. And these are your traditional time and temperature type signs that have been around since 1984. And so we will allow those to continue to, you know, scroll, and we've defined very tightly what those are, and it's your traditional, you know, signs that you see at the schools are fond of having, or Walgreens, that can display the text only, but don't have that graphic portion to it. With that, I will turn over the rest of, or I'd happy to actually ask any questions, if you have any questions on the substantive changes that we've kind of discussed.
You mentioned the small digital signs. Have we put, in looking at this revision, have we beefed up anything on the mobile sign?
Yes. We have, the advertising vehicles currently- We have, the advertising vehicles, currently our ordinance does not allow advertising vehicles, so again, the intent is already in, it's just kind of a procedural, and Thomas had the great idea to beef up the advertising. They're already prohibited, but also to classify them as off-premise signs, which are prohibited in our ordinance currently, and allow the enforcement to be against the registered owner of the vehicle. And so, the intent is the same, but the enforcement is where it can happen, actually, so we can effectively enforce the complaints that we receive on those types of signs. So, if there's no other questions, I can turn it over to Thomas to go over the outline.
Chairman McLenka and the Planning Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Julie's right when she says it turned into a much larger project than expected. The sign ordinance has been around for quite a while, it is a very complicated ordinance, and it has been piecemeal patched throughout its existence in the city. And what that means is that as it has developed, it has become more and more unwieldy. So, we're proposing to take it back to square one and completely reorganize. The outline that you have in front of you, I think is a two-column outline that shows on the left the current organizational structure, that seems to make very little sense, and then a proposed revised organizational structure. And what I did for you in that outline was I tried to use the same headings and titles so you can see how the existing provisions would fit in into some sort of organized, meaningful structure. That's what I mean when I say that these are non-substantive changes, they're merely procedural. The vast majority of what I'm doing at this time is just reorganizing the code in a way that's going to make it easier to understand and easier to be enforced. I heard that mentioned already once tonight, how can we make sure that things are being enforced? And you brought up a great example, I think it was Mr. Caldwell who brought up the advertising vehicles. We have an entire section of the code as it currently exists titled prohibited signs, and it lists a bunch of signs that are not allowed to exist. Advertising vehicles are one of them. So, if an advertising vehicle does exist, who do I prosecute in municipal court? Do I prosecute the sign for its existence? Do I prosecute the owner of the property on which the advertising vehicle happens to be sitting, because he's just going to move it next door? Or do I prosecute the driver of the vehicle who has been given an employment job to go drive that up and down the highway? It's very difficult to figure out how you handle that situation. And so, in a lot of the areas of the code, when we bring it back to you as a proposal next month, there's going to be a lot of changes to it, primarily addressed, the stuff that I'm working on right now is primarily addressed towards cleaning things like that up, so that there will be phrases along the lines of, "A person commits an offense when the person either places, allows to be placed, or allows to remain a sign that is an advertising sign, an advertising vehicle." All right? So, if you are, if you are the person who is doing it, then you have committed an offense. That's critical language for our prosecutor, because under the jurisprudence of Texas, you have to know that you're committing a crime in order for your, for much of your conduct to be criminal. And so, that's the kind of cleanup that I'm doing with it, and we wanted to preface it this month by letting you know it was going to be coming, so that next month you can be watching for it and you can expect. It's going to be a substantial amount of reading that we're going to be asking you to do, to go back and look at what has changed. Hopefully, the vast majority of the substance will be the same, but it's going to be arranged and presented in a more meaningful manner. Are there any questions about any of that for me tonight?
Be possible to get it as soon as possible, as soon as Mr. Goze is finished with it?
Absolutely. We've worked out sort of a rough draft of the procedure that we're going to use to complete this process. I'm hoping to have my draft done very soon, and then I will be meeting with both Julie and Jared to go over the whole thing, to make sure that the language that I'm using actually captures the intent that they want. They're the subject matter experts on this. They and you will make decisions about what exactly you want to prohibit, what you want to allow. And I'm just the, I'm just the language guy. I'm the guy who's putting it in writing in a way that's going to make it easily interpretable by people in the future. So, we'll go over that all together, then we will present that also to the city management, both the city manager and assistant city manager. And I think we're also intending to meet with members of the sign, the sign community.
I was going to ask you that. Hopefully, you're talking with them so that we can be, I'd like to go into it hand-in-hand.
That's right. I hope that, I hope that we're all on the same page before that comes to you all, so that, so that when you get an ordinance-
Probably won't, but-
Yeah, right. You may be right. There may be items on which we disagree.
But I think it's good that we do our diligence to try to work together.
And that is part of the plan, is that we will go through that process before it comes to you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We actually have already met with some of the sign representatives, some of the things that Julie presented, we have, we've kind of gone over and vetted that with them, but there's a lot, as you can hear, there's a lot more to come, so there'll be another round of meetings with them to make sure they're aware of what's being revised.
That's a good thing that we do that, we have to do that. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, if we could, I'd like to ask if we could back up, the comment was made earlier when we were talking about the fence and the bamboo, that we had received two emails, and I'd like to acknowledge the names of the folks that sent those emails in, because I appreciate the fact that they actually took the time to send the email in. Can we go back and do that? Okay. We received one email from Tommy Yendry at 607 New Haven, and he was, he would prefer a fence rather than the bamboo, and we also received one from Johnny Martin at 507 New Haven, again, supporting, putting a fence up, but not the bamboo. And I appreciate very much that those folks took the time to send those in, even though they knew they couldn't be here this evening.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Our next item is regarding the Fleetwood subdivision. This is a application we received, however, due to an error with the Victoria Advocate, it didn't quite meet the public notice requirements, and we have received a withdrawal of this application, and you can expect it at next month's, next month's planning commission, most likely.
All right. Glad that went all right.
And that's it for our development review side. I can go over the monthly development report, if you'd like.
All right. Next on the agenda is other business, so you're going to go ahead and take care of that?
As you can see, we received $2,155,000 valuation for the single-family residential this month, $26,000 in mobile homes, $227,000 in residential repairs, $1,630,000 in commercial additions or repairs, for a total of $4,292. That's compared to, oh, I'm sorry, that was last year's. Sorry, that was this year's, compared to $6,668 for last year. So, 4.2 compared to 6.6. We issued 172 MEP permits compared to 119 last year, and we collected $47,000 in permit fees compared to $44,000 last year. We received three minor plats this month. We received three major plats, Tuscany, Fleetwood, and Gulf Coast, which you'll be receiving Fleetwood again next planning commission. And we received three site plans for MW Rentals, Las Palmas Mexican Cafe, and Ensco Distributing. And I can answer any questions you may have about that.
Next on the agenda is Plan 2035.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to let you all know that obviously the plan is still moving forward. Next month, at the end of the month, Tuesday, March 31st, will be our first big public hearing. It'll be at the Community Center at 5:30. You'll be hearing a whole lot more about that, but that's the next big event. The advisory committee will be meeting the day before that, the evening before that, but you'll be hearing more about it. I just want to take every opportunity we can to try to make sure the public's aware of that big public meeting that'll be happening.
Have y'all met? Y'all have met? Y'all been meeting pretty regularly?
They've met once.
Yeah, once.
But those meetings will pick up, they'll kind of have some monthly ones that'll come up here in a minute, pretty soon, so. That's all we have from staff.
Next thing is items from the planning commission. Any, you're not going to tell me about your, no, I'm just kidding. Your-
Roberto's is gone.
It was an ISO, is what it was. Anyway, we do appreciate, I do want to say I appreciate the work that's going to happen with the sign. I think there's a lot of good work that's going to happen on that, I really believe that, and I think it's going to make it better, make it better so we don't have to go through a bunch of misery, because we do, we have been going through some misery over the last, well, I've been on this almost six years, so yeah. Anyway, that's all, I don't have anything yet.
No, I concur.
All right, well, the next thing is adjournment. Do I hear a motion from anybody?
I'm moving, we go home.
We have a motion by Mr. Caldwell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wayne. All those in favor, say aye. All right. All those opposed? Have a good one, we'll see you all next month.